God almighty, who believes in vacation and I'll do the talk. Thank you for doing the pleasure.
Please bow your heads. Dear Christ, we thank you for this beautiful day and week that we've had and we ask you for your blessings as we conduct business here for the citizens of Centerville. And we thank you again for your blessings and we praise you for your glory and for your resurrection, your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for being here. We have some wonderful things to discuss tonight and different things going on and happy, oh, and you said welcome everybody on Facebook too. Thank you all so much. Okay, public comments, there were nobody who requested any public comments, so we pass on to adoption amendments. We have the March 28th, 2024 planning retreat minutes. We're going to take a motion to take the amendments as ready.
Serve.
Motion is second. All favors aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, by way of just, I guess, discussion on that topic, we're going to do our best to meet next Wednesday and begin to discuss some of the basic issues that we discussed at the planning retreat.
That committee's going to meet, we hope, next Wednesday morning.
Waiting on email responses.
Thank you, sir. Council members, I'm with us, I'd ease on against spring break with his family, so hope he's having a great time, we're going to miss him. New business, no, there is no old business, so a new business. First item we have here, which is a wonderful item, I would like to see proclamation, month of military child, Councilman Bird and Economic Director Bryant.
Director Bryant.
Sure. I'm going to be here for like three things, I'm just going to move into the podium. So, the month of April is the month of the military child. Oftentimes, military children are not honestly overlooked, but they go through a lot that is not necessarily known to the general population. They move quite frequently, they are in and out of different school systems, it's very difficult for them to have friends because they move so frequently. And so, some years ago, it was determined that they deserve some recognition for that and there have been programs put together to recognize them, to bring them support, to help them transition, not only in all of the moving, but also in having a parent or sometimes both parents in and out of the home as they're doing active duty and serving our country. And so, we just wanted to take this time to do a proclamation to recognize those children in our community and in our area and throughout the nation who are, you know, serving along with their parents every day. So, I believe that the mayor has the proclamation there.
And I'm agreeing too. You know, it's particularly important to me because I was in the military for thirty four years and I had two children who were military rats, as they call. One was born in Iceland, that was almost born in Thailand, but came back to the States just barely in time, a couple of weeks. And so, they lived their whole life going from base to base to base to base. And so, they're proud of it. Wish they could speak the different languages if they could. I think they've forgotten what it is. Okay, I'm going to start, City of Centerville proclamation, whereas tens of thousands of brave Americans serving the military have taken the yield to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And whereas the children of these brave men and women make significant contributions to our schools, communities, and nation, despite prolonged and repeated absence of one of both parents. And whereas our military children are a source of pride and honor to us all, and it is fitting that we take time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they take care of us, we will take care of their children. And whereas the recognition of April as month of the military child provides a special opportunity to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their sacrifice, and unconditional support of our troops. And whereas Americans are encouraged to observe this month by connecting with military children and families to provide support to all the children affected by the former parents and other caring adults in their lives. Now therefore, I, John Harling, Mayor of the City of Centerville, Georgia, do hereby proclaim, proclaim April 2024 as month of military child. Signed as 22nd day of April 2024. Isn't that great? I just love it. And I know probably have a lot of military children in our city right now, scattered all over. I was one. And, we have one up there, and there's a villain over there. It's a knife. Wow. Yep. Okay. And now we have item number two on the new business is the GIC update, Councilman Bird and Economic Director Bryant.
Once again, I'll turn it over to Director Bryant.
Hello again. Okay, so I just wanted to bring a quick update this evening. As you all know, we are part of what's called the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. That is a three-year program that the city went through, finishing up in 2021. That program has brought about some pretty good things for us. We've gotten two apartment complexes out of that, we've gotten a chip grant that's helped us to revitalize some homes in our community, it's gotten us exposure throughout the state. We actually serve as an example to other communities in a variety of ways and we are called upon for our information and guidance for other communities who are currently going through that program. And I just wanted to give you an update on that program because we don't talk a whole lot about it, but the GIC program helps communities improve their quality of life and economic vitality through the development of locally driven housing and revitalization strategies. As I said, we completed the initial program in 2021 and just last week, we found out that we have been recertified in our alumni status for another two years, which allows us to take part in the benefits of the program such as the chip grant, the Lytec program, the GIC letter and things like that through 2025. Since taking part in this program, as I said, we've received numerous requests for consideration of housing projects through DCA's low income housing tax credit program, also known as Lytec. The Regional Commission initially helped our housing team to create a scoring rubric to evaluate any proposals so that that can be done in a fair and equitable way and we still use that yearly for any proposals that we receive. As a GIC participant, the City of Centerville is able to send a letter of support for one Lytec project each year. They recently updated this with DCA that it's now two points towards an application that that letter can help in adding to an application for any proposals that are submitted to DCA. It used to only be one point, now it's two. Both phases of Avenue Tenet Galleria received those letters of support from us in the past and went on to receive the funding for the projects that we currently see completed and in process right now through DCA. This year, we put out a call for proposals, we give a month's notice to the public for that, for anyone who may be interested in pursuing our GIC letter. We received contact from three different developers. One developer called at the very last minute and when they realized the process that we required of them kindly removed themselves from the situation. They said they just didn't have enough time to get us everything we needed, but they would think about us in the future. We also received a proposal from Talon Development and Grove Creek Ventures. If you may recall that they brought a proposal to us last year, they asked that we resubmit their proposal again for review from our housing team. I don't know if you're aware, I believe you all should be, but this project missed funding by half a point last year. So, we were the very first non-funded project that's all done in a rubric style through DCA, everything scored and we were at the cutoff line, which is very unfortunate.
We were the very first non-funded project, right?
Yes, we were, we were right there, we missed about half a point. So, it is a very competitive process, that gives you any idea of how competitive the process is, but it's also a very good project. And so, with that being said, they asked us to reconsider the project again this year, which our housing team did. We did receive a third application from a new developer and after our housing team met on the 22nd, I did speak with that developer, I let them know the outcome of that meeting and they have since withdrawn their application. I did give them some constructive, I won't go too deep, some constructive feedback as to ways that they could possibly reposition their application and bring it in the future time to have a better chance of the funding through DCA happen. And they were very interested in that, they were very thankful for our time, they're very interested in our community, so I do expect that we'll be hearing from them again. With us tonight, we have Mr. Tim Smith, he is a representative of Grove Creek Ventures here on behalf of Talon Development. He will be answering any questions that you may have. I believe in your package, you should have the printouts for their proposal, thus for Century? Yes. That is, like I said, the proposal from last year. A few slides have been updated with updated numbers and dates, but otherwise, they are presenting the project as it was last year. We, the housing team, will bring our recommendation to City Council at our next meeting on April 16th as for the project that we have chosen to support and asking for your support and the GIC letter to send to DCA if you so choose. Just a brief overview of the project from Talon, it will be 73 units, I believe, how many of those will be?
Market rate.
Market rate.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, so we'll say eight. Eight units will be market rate, the remaining units will be between 50 and 60 AMI will be the qualifications for living in those. There's a stringent application policy for the tenants of those. This will be developed on the Houston Lake Road site to the north of us. It's a 17-plus acre site, they only plan to develop about four acres. There are some utility lines that run through there, a gas line, things of that nature that kind of make it difficult for developing more of it. So, the plan is to leave it as green space, develop it maybe as walking trails or small parklets or things like that for the residents there, but then only having about four developed acres as far as the buildings and parking are concerned. If you have any questions, as I said, Mr. Smith is here with us this evening, if you would like to ask anything of him, now is the time.
I remember the project from, from last year and it seemed like a good proposal at the time to, I definitely review this again.
And I will say that even though we have already reviewed this proposal in the past, we treated it as a new proposal this year, as if we'd never seen it before, because like I said, we did receive another proposal and so we put them both through our scoring rubric. Each of them were asked individual questions, those questions were answered based on their specific proposal and the housing team made a determination based on that. So, even though we did have kind of that connection already and the relationship that we have established over this time, we did look at them as if they were a new project.
No, I'm good, I reviewed this in Centerville, last year I think it was good and I haven't missed it last year, but. Not much, so I'm glad you want to take another shot.
Yes, so the only question I have is that, like the previous ones that we went through, will there be, is there, will there be a public meeting announced to invite the citizens out to offer their concerns?
The only reason there was a public meeting before is because the properties would have required rezoning and so there were public meetings for that purpose, but this property is already zoned R3, which would be its intended use for development and so there would not be a need for a public hearing.
Yeah, I remember this from last year, you know, when I was very grateful last year and like Councilman Wright, I was disappointed that we didn't quite make it. So, thank you, Ms. Smith, I appreciate you very much for being here. I encourage her.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, Sam, from you?
If you do, you're welcome too.
Well, I'll speak very briefly.
I'll just leave my seat.
I would like to add to what Ms. Bryant just said about them evaluating our proposal as though it was independent, it was not submitted last year and that's our focus as well. We didn't come into this assuming anything this year, we want to present to the city just like we did last year and, you know, hopefully the best design, the best team will actually be awarded the GIC letter and that's really all I have to say and I want to thank you very much for consideration.
So, thank you for being here. Okay, let's go down to number four here, which is the RWD grant, the Councilman Bird and Economic Director Bryant. Director Bryant?
Hello. Okay, so, as you all are aware, the city did recently receive a grant from the recycling and waste division fund of $324,315. The intention of this grant is to expand, well relocate and expand our existing recycling center. This evening, we need to review the grant agreement and if you are in agreement with the agreement, have it signed so that we can resubmit or so that we can submit it to put us into a binding contract for the grant funds. And I believe that City Attorney Tidings sent a memorandum out again today, she had sent it previously, but she sent it again today for review, kind of summarizing all of the documentation and answering any questions you might have, but if there are other questions, I will gladly answer those to the best of my ability.
Councilwoman Wright, you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we adopt this agreement for the grant as certainly.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Two seconds, let's not do that. Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions here? There's two things I have to say, one is, thank you so much, Shannon, for all your hard work and getting that grant approved, that was absolutely wonderful one. Did you tell anybody how much it was?
I did. $324,315.
There we go. And City Attorney Tidings, thank you so much for that great breakdown of everything, you took a lot of information and gave it to a way you could really understand it and I have any questions, thank you for that. Okay, anybody else have any comments or thoughts on it? Okay, all the questions, all the favors say aye? Aye. All the votes same time? Passes and hasps, thank you very much. All right, item number five here is fire department pay structure change, Councilman Omeo and Fire Chief Jones.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Chief Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, as we discussed in the planning retreat, I'm coming to you with a proposal on how a pay structure change for fire department employees that work shift work. Currently, basically, apparently firefighters are paid when they want to shift, 18 hours a shift, unless they're woken up between the hours of midnight and 6:00 a.m. and they're compensated with an extra six hours. I'm recommending that we change that from paying them 18 hours a shift to paying them the full 24 hours that they're at the fire station. If it's approved, some adjustments to their hourly rates will have to be made, as well as their sick leave and annual leave accrual rates will have to be made. And tonight, I'm seeking approval based on my memo that you have on those numbers that we change the pay structure, how we pay these firefighters and pay them 24 hours if they're on a shift.
Chief, does this put us more in line with what other departments are doing as well?
Yes.
And would you say this, since we're not really able to say we've paid for the whole 24 hours, does it hurt our, hamper our recruitment efforts?
Actually, it will help.
No, I think that's the current, this current setup hampers.
The current setup does hamper it and it does have people when they, they do a second guess when you say, well, we only pay you for 18 hours unless you're woke up, they kind of, you know, whoa, hold on a minute.
The way I understand it, this is a little bit of outdated policy. The way I understand it, this is a little bit of outdated policy based off of.
This is very outdated.
Particularly contentious.
This was originally done back thirty-some odd years ago when they hired the first three full-time firefighters to save money, it was a way to save money because they didn't get a lot of call for service at night. Now, our call for service at night is, we are at currently between midnight 6, it's 20% of our call volume.
I think, I think this one is easy, yeah, that we're paid for it more often than not, it sounds like anyway, and so it really is just a change on paper, a adjustment to make things a little more balanced and makes it easier for you to hire folks on the call for it. It's not as if they're being paid with their sleep, it's like if somebody's on call, they're being paid to sleep in a particular place and they're there with you, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Carol, you see any problem with the budget?
Do I see any problems?
Make those changes.
With the budget?
Yeah.
Well, no, I do not, it should be, it should be a pretty comfortable transition.
Yeah. I knew that was the answer, but I want to make sure by this.
The current, if it doesn't really make very much change at all with the current get paid, it just is a much better, it just makes more sense.
The way I proposed it is they stay on the pay scale. They stay up, they drop five classes to what they currently are and that, that also helps with the longevity pay. If they drop five classes and no steps, that's where we want to keep them. But the pay is very comparable to what they're getting now, it's no raise, they, our overtime budget will go up because they will work hours overtime, however, their hourly salary will drop from what they currently make now. It's very comparable.
It's pushed pretty much.
Yes.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
So, Mayor, I make a motion, we approve this pay structure change for the line duty fire department personnel.
Second. All right. I like that, two seconds here, that's the way to do it.
I would like to add, before the final vote, is I would like for it to go into effect on April 17th, the next pay period.
The effect of April 17th, okay. Is that due?
What Jason and I talked about is will do, we've done personnel manual amendments by memo to be included with people's pay advice and we will get that out and it can go in with the next payroll advice, so when they get their text up, they'll get this memo about to change.
As long as we get that under.
I don't know why we couldn't.
Okay. Okay. All the questions, all the favors say aye? Aye. All whole same time. Here now, that's, thank you for all the hard work on that, though.
Thank you.
Yeah. If the council agree, I'd like to entertain a motion to add Mike Rumbill to give us an update of current projects in the city. In the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All the favors say aye? Aye. Okay. IQ number six. I asked Mike to do the previous bit, I forgot to add it through there, so just, just an update, no decisions are made.
It's a public works, water and sewer and building update, we start, start offering our public works. We're working on the 2024 Elme project, as you know, we approved the list for some time back of Arbor Lane, Newport Island, Antucket Island, and Eagle Harbor. We will be getting some surplus money this year from the state in the amount of $130,869. We plan to add another, maybe another street and do some, some striping on some existing roads throughout the city. And a SPOSS project, widening project, as you know, Wilson Drive and Elverda Road on, we're on the 2018 SPOSS Countywide Project List, this project moving along well. The design and right-of-way documents are complete and the right-of-way acquisition is probably 90% complete, a couple of holdouts. The design does include a traffic circle and roundabout, as we talked about before, where Wilson Drive and Collins Avenue intersect, the project will look a lot like this road I hit Church Street with, with three lanes and sidewalk on both sides. As we did Church Street, we will be relocating the existing utilities on Wilson and Elverda and we have put the money in the budget, this, this next year's budget to do that with. And the water and sewer, we're looking at the Bay God Trump Line, the state has that still in review and we have the capacity letter from Warren Robbins, so we're ready to move forward and start bidding the project once we get the okay from the state, the final okay from the state. We're currently working on easement and bid documents and will begin occurring those easements to complete the project real soon. Also, water and sewer, we've decided that we're going to have cleanup week this, this April, April 26th, I mean, April 22nd through the 26th, as we do every year and kind of coincide with Earth Day. As long as they have their garbage out by the road on their regular pickup date, that garbage will be picked up and no extra charge. If I have appliances, they put them out by the road and call, call the office and we'll have those picked up. Overall, the department's doing very well, although it's been, it was slow hiring the positions, we were almost full now in our positions, I think I had like two broken positions left. We hope to be full soon. As most of you know, Ms. Betty, our office manager, will be leaving April the 30th, she'll be retiring after 39 years of service. It is our plan to promote Ms. Kim Johnson, our assistant office manager, into that position and we'll fill Ms. Kim's position. The building department is still very busy, busy, although we will not be asking for another inspector position in the, in the budget this year, instead, we are training from within to help the inspector when needed. Currently, we have seven projects going on, going strong. The first one is Old Stone Cross and it's about 600 lots, we currently have 26 active permits in that area. In Eagle Springs, it's, it's built, built out, we don't have any active new homes in there, we've got 10 three-mile permits in Eagle Springs. Grove Landing, about 320, 300 lots, we have 17 active permits in phase one. Emerald Oaks is the other new subdivision on Dunbar, about 313 lots, the review is complete and approved for phase one and one land service permit has currently been issued. In Aiden Heights, over here off of Elverda Road, three duplexes in phase two, 12 spaces total and all the permits have been issued and they're about 50, probably 50% complete on those. Avenue Tenet Gallery and Mall, the apartment's being built, the two, two buildings in phase two, about 80 units total, review is complete, permit's issued and they're about 50% complete on, on the project. Billstone Phase Four, over off of Hickory Glen, about 56 lots total, submitted for review, review is complete and no, no permits to get issued as of yet. That's about it.
What about the project behind Allen?
The stormwater project we have over there behind Humane Society and Allen Street Service, Mr. Allen has cleared all the easement over there, so we can get, it's been, about 90% of it's been surveyed, they're going to stick out surveyed the place, the little part portion of it where he had block, but hopefully we'll be working on some prices for that project in the very near future and, and get it completed early summer here.
That includes all that fencing around the.
That's correct, as of yet, that's the.
One other question, Wilson and Elverda, they will be combined in one project?
Phase one will be Wilson and phase two will be when it crosses over Collins, that'll be phase two.
Okay. Because I was thinking that one would be a little later.
It'd be a little bit later, but it should be, it should be right behind, one behind the other.
Is that culvert on Wilson that makes it take a little?
It took a little extra design, but they've got it done.
All right, anybody else have any comments, questions? I'm so proud of everything, thank you.
I will add, we're still currently, we're doing about. I, I will add that we're still currently, we're, we're doing about between eleven and twelve hundred, uh, work orders a month in the public works department.
I know I always see trucks out right in early when I'm even in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
They're all out of range. A lot of work.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for everything. I thank everybody in the city for all helping. I know it's not a one-person project. Your leadership makes it work.
All right. Comments from the council? Both want?
Well, I'd like to just talk about the spring cleanup, April twenty-second to twenty-sixth. Um, I will go over all of that information again, but it'd be very similar to last year. And, uh, information will be posted on, in the usual spot, social media, et cetera. And again, just have your cleanup items out at curd with your normal trash. And if you don't get, if it doesn't get picked up on that day, it just means they're running a little behind from the volume and it will be picked up the next day. Uh, this Friday, we have food truck Friday. Looks like, I just checked the weather. It looks like the weather's going to be nice on that day. So I would expect it to be a very busy time.
Spring break.
Uh, spring break, that's correct. And, uh, hopefully we have lots of people come out and have a lot of fun. And then on Saturday, the thirteenth, we will have the public service lineup, which is, uh, is similar to an event where you might touch a, a vehicle. However, that, that's a trademarked, uh, term. So we have the public service lineup instead. And it's going to have our, uh, uh, fire and police, uh, and public works out there to, um, have some, some fun and, and allow kids to, uh, see, see what goes on with those groups. And there's more to be, uh, music and food trucks and other, uh, fun, I think. You said balloon lady?
Balloon lady. Sure, nice balloon.
Yeah, and, uh, you said one other thing. What was that?
I, I don't.
Okay. So then it'll be lots of fun for kids out there on, uh, Saturday the thirteenth from eleven a.m. to two p.m. So that looks like, um, quite an activity. Um, and I'm looking forward to it. Um, and thank you, Shannon, for your, all your extremely hard work. I haven't seen, oh, this much, you know, stuff. It's all, you know, all in from the same person, all, all going on at the same time. So I really appreciate, uh, that extremely busy schedule that you keep. No more comments. Thank you.
Shannon, do you want to get the rights to tap a truck? We could lock that down now.
I don't know. I'm, I'm just, it all makes me very nervous.
We could call it not touch a truck. Definitely not touch a truck.
Definitely not.
Join us for our contractionally dissimilar touch a truck event.
How about give us a little update on your church renovation over there?
Uh, sure.
All I see is growth expansion.
Yeah, we, we just finished a year, well, we're almost finished with the year-long renovation. The last project will begin in June to just do some audio visual installs. But yeah, church is healthy and growing and that's why my hair is brown. And, uh, it's been, it's been a busy season.
You did a wonderful gobble there. First of all, I did thank the church.
Both want?
Okay, so, um, I want to talk about something I thought was very important. On March twenty-eighth, we had a strategic planning retreat for the mayor and council as well as all the department heads. And, and, uh, I believe these minutes are going to be posted on the website. I encourage everyone to go out and review the minutes of the things that were discussed in our city as far as, uh, visions and thinking forward, uh, plans that we have. And so a couple of things I did want to highlight, which I thought were the two biggest things, was that, uh, the Center Park Master Plan should be reviewed and updated as needed before phase two improvements are launched. This includes an assessment of the scale of the amphitheater and so in future growth of Center Park. So, uh, there is a, there is a, uh, effort underway to review, to again, review the master plan and available provide the city an idea of where we are as a city going forward with that plan. The second thing I thought was big was the recycle center grant and the fact that we received the grant and now that we approved, uh, to, to move forward with the grant, the city will then, uh, work with getting plans to how the layout of the, of the new recycle center is going to be. And we're going to be excited to share that with you also as we go through those steps. And, uh, so I encourage the citizens out there to take a look at those minutes and feel free to reach out to any one of us if you have any questions or concerns. Uh, we did, uh, get a brief from every department headed about what their thoughts are. But those are the two takeaways that I walked away with that I thought. It was worth that one day of this, of meeting and talking over, uh, city business. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Hope everybody had a great Easter. Wonderful week here. And I thank you everybody for having me. Anything else? Thank you so much for everybody that came. The council's over.